Good evening and welcome to the Cedar Falls School District Board of Education meeting on this Monday, December 13th. Want to welcome you all to our meeting this evening. For those of you watching, our format will be a little bit different this evening because it is a transition from a retiring board to a new board. And so, the first few agenda items are going to be related to the retiring board. And we'll, we'll work through those rather quickly, and then we'll adjourn this board. And then, Donnell Gonnerman will be leading the meeting for organizing and for the new board. So, calling the meeting to order, actually, I see we have several individual items. If there is no, if there's no objection from anyone on the board, I'm going to ask for a motion to approve B, C, D, and E together.
So moved.
All right. Thank you, Susie. Is there a second?
Second.
Second to Jeff. Thank you very much. Seeing no question or comment, we'll ask for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the ASME contract for 2022 to 2025. So, what I'd ask for is the motion second, and then we'll move into discussion with Mr. Talbot and others.
I move that the Cedar Falls Community School District Board of Education approve the Cedar Falls American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, AFSMI, 2022-2025 contract as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Thank you very much, Susie. And now into discussion. Mr. Talbot.
Thank you. The tentative agreement on a contract for the period July 1, 2022 through June 30th of 2025 was reached on November the 10th of 2021. This proposed agreement follows an agreement covering the period July 1, 2020 through June 30th of 2022. The tentative agreement has been ratified by the AFSMI members. AFSMI covers the bargaining unit where basically all of our food service employees across the district work. There are 55 of them approximately, and they're assigned to the kitchens throughout the district. The details of the proposal, the economic items, the base wage would increase by 50 cents per hour in 2022-3, 40 cents an hour in 23-24, and 30 cents an hour in 24-25. The wage rate for returning employees during those same years would increase by the same amounts. The duration of the agreement would be three years. And as the board will note in the italics at the bottom, I just included that as a reminder that in light of the changes in 2017 with chapter 20, insurance is now a prohibited subject of bargaining, but clearly, there's a cost to the insurance package to the district. And so, that gets factored into the calculations for the total cost of the total package settlement. And because this is a multi-year agreement, Ms. Gonnerman has made conservative estimates with regard to an increase in insurance in the 2023-24 and 24-25 years. And so, if the actual increase in insurance in those years is less than the amount we've assumed, that difference would get added to those increases in wages. We've had this, a similar approach with this bargaining unit a number of times during the last 16 years. And in every instance, the adjustment subsequently has been to the benefit of the employees. In other words, an additional incremental amount has been added to the hourly wage increase. So, we believe these assumptions are conservative, and it enabled us to reach a settlement very amicably and quite efficiently. So, the total package settlement over the three years would be 3.3%, which would include insurance. The actual wage increase, on average, over those three years is 2.94. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Moving now to any questions from board members.
I do have one question. How, the insurance, how many does that impact about the percentage of?
I think between four and six people.
Just four and six, okay. Because everybody else is...
Everybody in that group has a single insurance, and then there are a small number of individuals that have been in that bargaining unit a long time that still qualify for family insurance. But that's more, that group is very, very small. That was a benefit that the group before I joined the district in 2005 had bargained the family insurance. Basically, they bargained that away in return for something else that at that time they valued more.
Thank you, Adrian.
Right. Thank you. Seeing no further comments or questions, we'll move to a vote on this motion. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now, at this point, we are going to adjourn this board. So, it is a bittersweet moment because we need to, there will be three of our members of our board who are retiring. Joyce, Jeff, and Alan. And I have to say, I think it's been a pleasure to serve you, serve with you. We will miss you. And certainly, as I think I've certainly emphasized too many times over that this is a volunteer board. And those who serve on it are here because they're passionate about education and how it impacts our community. And so, and each of you have brought very wonderful and unique skills and questions and perspectives onto this board, which are what make a great board, is that diversity of backgrounds and questions and perspectives. So, I each, so, Joyce has previously received this, but both Jeff and Alan are receiving a clock from the school district, which, you know, in the future, as you're watching us on YouTube, you can, you know, watch the clock going and, and think back and reminisce of those good times on the school board. So, thank you once again to the three of you for all of your dedicated service. We will miss you and appreciate all that you've done in volunteering for the school district and your contributions. So, thank you very much. So with that, would one of the three of you like to motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, Jeff.
I'll second that.
All right, Alan. Thank you very much. This may be one of those times I'd like to say, no, we're not going to adjourn. No, no, we're going to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. We are adjourned. And what we're going to do is take a brief
Welcome back. I'd like to call this meeting to order. With those in attendance, Director Haseman, Director Heinz, Director Lieber, and Director Gruber, a quorum has been determined, and the board may now proceed to perfect the permanent organization. Next on the agenda is the official notification of election results from the Black Hawk County Auditor. I have in my possession, the possession of the certified abstract of votes. For the district at large, there were six individuals running. They are as follows. RJ Meyer, 4,077 votes. Brenda Feit, 3,775 votes. Lowell Stutzman, 3,710 votes. Alan Heisterkamp, 3,537 votes. Jeff Orvis, 3,302 votes. TW Ingham, 1,461 votes. There were scattering votes of 276 for a total votes of 20,138. The Board of Supervisors did declare RJ Meyer, Brenda Feit, and Lowell Stutzman duly elected to the Office of the Board of Directors for the Cedar Falls Board of Education for a four-year term. If you three could stand, I will provide the oath of office at this time. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa, and that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the Office of Director in the Cedar Falls Community School District, Cedar Falls, Iowa, as now and hereafter required by law? Answer, I will. Thank you. Congratulations. I also do have a certificate for each of you that I will present at the end of the meeting. So, we will now move forward with the election of the Board President. As a reminder, board policy states, 201.3 states the election shall be conducted by first obtaining written nominations. The two members whose names appear most frequently as nominees for an office shall be candidates. And the election of the office shall be written in ballot. Therefore, I have provided at each of your workstations a blue 2021 nomination ballot. It has checkboxes on it. There's two ballots, there's two different ballots. One has checkboxes, one has information to write. At this time, I'd like you to please complete the form by checking one box for the Director for nominating for President. And also, please sign that document and return it to my attention. now cast one vote between the two candidates that I've just named on your 21-voting ballot for Office of President. Again, that is blue. And if you could please write the candidate's name you were voting for for President and sign the document as well, please. President. Congratulations. And please join, if you could please stand, and receive the oath of office. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa, that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the Office of Board President and the Cedar Falls Community School District, Cedar Falls, Iowa, as now and hereafter required by law? Answer, I will.
I will.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you, colleagues.
I'll now move forward with the election of the Vice President. Again, I've provided at your workstation a green 21 nomination ballot for the Cedar Falls Vice President. At this time, if you complete the ballot, it is the checkbox ballot, with one individual, Okay. At this time, the following candidates are the two directors receiving the most votes, and that's Director Lieber and Director Gruber. If you could please proceed to cast one vote using the final remaining green sheet voting ballot and sign as well, please, After reviewing all the votes, Director Lieber is elected as the Cedar Falls Board Vice President. Ms. Lieber, if you could please join me for the oath of office. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States of Iowa, and that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the Officer of Board Vice President in the Cedar Falls Community School District, Cedar Falls, Iowa, as now or hereafter required by law? Answer, I will. Congratulations. I will now turn it over to President Haseman.
Thank you very much, Donnell. And welcome to the new board members. Wonderful to have you on the board and look forward to your input. Don't be afraid to ask questions if you have questions, because if it's a question in your mind, it's probably in a question of someone who is watching the meeting. So, it's okay. I know when I was a new board member, I caught myself occasionally apologizing until finally said, no, don't need to apologize. It's okay. So, certainly welcome you and look forward to your service on this board. So, with that, we're going to, on the agenda, move to item I, which is adopt written policies, rules, regulations, and procedures. And if I'm not mistaken, this is more just a procedural thing that we need to do as far as a cleanup and to comply with Iowa law. And so, I'd like to invite a motion to approve that.
I move that the Cedar Falls Board of Education adopt the policy, rules, regulations, and procedures that govern the organization under Iowa Code 279.8.
Thank you very much. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Nate. I assume no discussion on this. We'll move to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving now to the consent agenda. We just have two items on here for new board members. This is the open enrollment report of just students coming in and, and out of the district to approve that. And then, a human resource report for any changes in personnel. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Susie. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jenny. Seeing no questions or comments, move to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving now, I think we're going directly to communications. Oh, I'm sorry. Right. Yes, we'll start with Molly. Thank you, Molly. Welcome.
Hi. It feels like it's been a while since I've talked to all of you. So, we've got a lot to talk about. All of our concerts are kind of lining up with this week. So, tonight, there's an orchestra concert at 7:30. Thursday, there will be a band concert, and then next Monday is the choir concert. For Student Senate, right now, we're having candy cane sales starting tomorrow morning, and they'll be sold for a dollar, and all the proceeds will go to Dance Marathon. We've also been keeping busy. At our meetings Wednesday morning, we've been having Santa come in and help us respond to the letters to Santa that come in from the mailbox at Holiday Hoopla on Main Street. For sports, a while back, the men's dance team placed second at state. There's a JV wrestling tournament tonight at Vinton Schelsberg, and a girls' wrestling meet at City High. And then tomorrow, there's a boys' and girls' bowling meet at Maple Lanes, boys' swim meet at Cedar Rapids-Jefferson, and a boys' basketball game against Cedar Rapids-Jefferson at the high school. And then there's a lot more upcoming boys' and girls' basketball games and wrestling meets and everything. So, winter sports are up and running. And then for clubs and everything, Rocket Club, their project was accepted by the NASA Student Launch Competition. For CAPS MED, they recently helped sort recycling at the Humane Society and got to play with some furry pets. And then, Senior Leadership is having a tea party this Thursday to commemorate the decisions made regarding the class flower colors and motto. Yeah.
All right. Thank you, Molly. Any, any questions? Molly's our, for new board members, Molly is our representative from the high school. So, comes and gives us a little update on happenings that are going on. So, any questions or comments for Molly?
Just a quick one. Do you have the time, do you have the times for those concerts this week?
I think each of them is at 7:30.
Thank you.
All right. Wonderful. Well, have a great Christmas break.
Yeah, thanks.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. And is the choir concert at the high school? That's Monday.
Yep. That's upcoming Monday.
Great.
Yeah. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Molly.
Thank you, Molly.
Thank you Molly.
Good evening, welcome to the new Board members. Tonight, first of all, I would just like to introduce Grace Farrick. She is here tonight for us to congratulate her on her state championship at the swim meet, it was in November.
Thank you, I just wanted to say, I couldn't have done any of it without my team and my coaches. They supported me the whole time, and I just knew, like, when I got in the pool and I was like jumping up and down before my race, they were behind my lane just screaming for me, and it was so exciting. I couldn't have done it without them, and my coaches just coaching me the whole time and believing in me, I couldn't have done it without them.
Wonderful, yep, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And you're going to be swimming next year?
Yes, I'm going to the University of Kentucky to swim, so I'll go in the summer, which I am so excited for.
Excellent, excellent, well, best wishes to you.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here Grace, it's great to acknowledge you, and congrats, and to Mom too. So now, we'll just talk about some of the other things that are happening in the district, and we'll bring up the communications update. Again, a big congratulations to Grace on her state championship, and she was also named to the All Iowa Women's Elite Team. Kind of at the beginning here, we have some great congrats. Nicole Davis, she's our band director for Hanson, North Cedar, and Lincoln Elementary, and she was just awarded an Excellence in Teaching Award for the elementary level by the Northeast Iowa Band Masters Association. This award is presented to those who meet the criteria of excellence, dedication, and commitment to the value of instrumental music in our schools. So we're also very excited that we're able to have our elementary band concerts have been back in person, as well as orchestra and choir this year, so that's exciting for everyone. And then these are our student athletes at the high school. There's a special day where they sign National Letters of Intent to become student athletes at the collegiate level. So this is Olivia Bronner, Trey Campbell, Grace Farricks, Marlee Richter, Elena Litzel, Avery Fleischer, and Sarah Albaugh. All were celebrated that day when they signed their National Letters of Intent, so congratulations to them. And these are eighth grade band students, Pete and Holmes, who were selected for the All Iowa Eighth Grade Band, Alyssa Charlton, Elijah Buscol, Ella Bobbledyke, Andrew Gertis, Ellie Smith, Lucas Halverson, and Ethan Boyle. So congratulations to those eighth grade students. And this is from the Holmes Art Department. They had students participate in the Lions Club Piece Poster Contest, and the Lions Club came and then presented those awards to the students there. They actually were given cash awards for the prizes, and then the first place winner goes on to the state competition. And this is Mrs. Kamenzine, she was awarded the Tools for Schools Award from KWWL in November, and this says, teachers are able to apply for these dollars, and then KWWL awards them out based on the applications, and she's going to be using those dollars for some literacy intervention material. And then, big thanks to Farmer State Bake, we have great partners across our community, and this is just one of the many. The Cedar Falls Bake staff brought hats and gloves to our district building, they were able to then distribute to our elementary students in need. And then even for a lot of the kiddos, sometimes forget gloves or a hat, so we're able to have those in all of our buildings to then help those kids still be able to enjoy recess outside. This is just kind of a shout out we wanted to give to our speech team this year. We have a new coach, Rob Chagdis, and this year, we have 37 students that are signed up to participate in group and individual events, so we're really excited for Rob and all the things that he has planned for the group, and this was kind of their first meeting. Like Molly had mentioned, this is the Rocket Club. The team there is on the left side, and on the right, they have a great Twitter account where they're posting lots of things, updating about their progress and their planning, so we definitely encourage everyone to follow their Twitter account. They've also been doing some great community outreach. So on the left there, you can see they went to the Cedar Falls Lions Club to give a presentation, and then they did some outreach with a Boy Scout troop as well, that they were able to do Stomp Rockets as part of that outreach. And then we also had Computer Science Education Week earlier in December, and this is Mrs. Adam, she's at Holmes Junior High. She does a lot of great things and tweets some of the things that they're doing all the time, and she also has a Girls Who Code Club that celebrated Computer Science Education Week. And then, just wanted to mention, we had a great group of ninth grade students that attended Hawkeye Community College for kind of an opportunity day from Pete and Holmes Junior High. And now, we'll go on to a few things happening at the elementary level. This was a great activity that happened for the preschool class at Cedar Heights. One of the students' uncles was able to bring in a snowy owl, and the students were able to actually see and see the owl, learn about it, and some of the facts, it was just a great opportunity for them to learn about something new. And this is at Hanson Elementary. These are... ...from home, is that looking for Buddy? Okay, trying to make sure. A fuzzy friend from home for word school, they did some lesson plans and then taught their furry friends how to read words. And this is North Cedar Elementary, this was a great project. The students wanted to have a four-square to be able to play at recess, so working with Mr. Olson there, they actually figured out on their own, they did the measuring, painted all of the lines, and actually did that whole project on their own. So congratulations to those North Cedar leaders. And this is at Orchard Hill Elementary, they've brought back their passion groups, which is something they do where students are able to really kind of dig into something they're really interested in and research it, and it's something they kind of do as part of their leader-in-me work, so this is just showing some of the new passion groups that they have going on at Orchard Hill. And then, we just had big Lego League competitions happening for many of our Lego League teams across the district. We have teams in all of our elementary buildings, and of course, then the Lego League develops into the Robotics Club at the high school. So congratulations to all those teams that qualified for the state meet. And Holmes Junior High, Holmes Huddle is a group that got together right before Thanksgiving and delivered 20 Thanksgiving meals to families in our community. And Lincoln Elementary, their fifth grade student leaders are holding a food drive for the Northeast Iowa Food Bank, it's December 13th through the 17th, and students are welcome to bring in non-perishable food items that they'll then donate to the Northeast Iowa Food Bank. This just shows some of the great updates happening at the high school. We do have a new drone video that's posted on the website to get updates, but this also shows the high school auditorium, which will also be the tornado safe room, and then the stairs, the learning stairs, that are kind of on the backside of the building as well. And just wanted to mention and thank Channel 15. You can catch a lot of replays of the games that are happening, and they're a great supporter of the Tigers. There is also time to still join the Booster Club, but then also make sure you download these apps to stay on top of all of the activities that Molly mentioned, swimming, bowling, basketball, wrestling, men's, women's, we have lots, I'm going to forget one, and I'm going to feel bad. But there's lots of things happening, the activities, the choir and concerts are on the app as well. And then we have updated resources on our Equity website that we encourage everyone to go and check out as well. And there's where you can follow all of the things happening. Any questions?
All right, see no questions, thank you very much, appreciate it. Moving on to the agenda item M, we'll look at the October financial reports.
Absolutely, I actually have the reports together, so October and November, if that's acceptable enough, to go ahead and cover those as we can.
Wonderful.
So our October financials, I'll review the purposes of the funds as we have them, as well as give you a little bit of background on them, and if we can move forward to the next screen, this is October. So our general fund, we utilize those dollars and are available for the purpose of an overall operation. So that really includes our salary and benefits. It includes utilities, it includes supplies. It does also include equipment, but the purpose of our general fund is really that overall purpose of the education and the instructional facility itself. We have then our management fund, and you'll see on this screen, and it is a little bit difficult to read, and I apologize, but it is within your board packet as well. You'll see that the revenues and expenditures are listed based out for each particular month, or based out for each particular fund as well, and then our ending balance at that time too. But our management fund is utilized for our property, district property, and casualty insurance. It also includes our unemployment, as well as our workman comp insurance, and you'll see the revenues and expenditures associated to that. The majority of those expenditures occur in July, and that's because our premiums are due at that time. There are a few that funnel throughout, and you'll see expenditures throughout the next few months, and that is primarily your workman's comp or your unemployment. And there are some additional insurances that do occur if we add vehicles and fleet to our fleet, so. Then we move on to our save, which is our local option sales tax, or our one cent money, and that is utilized for our projects. So we utilize that for the remodel of many of our facilities. We've utilized those funds for Aldrich Elementary, North Cedar, and recently Orchard Hill. We're also utilizing those funds for the new high school. And so you'll see that there's a significant amount of those funds available, and that is because of our recent sale in June of revenue, sales tax revenue bonds. You'll see that there's a cash with fiscal agent of $19,445,000. We currently pull that down on a draw, and so those funds are available to us, but we utilize them as needed as the high school continues. At this time next year, you potentially could see that fund just as large as we will be utilizing our GO bond for the sale for $69.9 million as well. So you'll see that growing as well too. But our Pipple Fund is our physical plan levy, and that is utilized for, as well, facilities, but it's also utilized for equipment, and so that would be like our one-on-one equipment that we have throughout the district, so our Chromebooks, as well as our iPads for our students. It also includes our buses, our vehicles, and then obviously repairs and maintenance throughout the facility itself. But again, it does not include salaries and benefits or utilities within that fund. It's very specific. You'll also note then our debt service, our debt service is utilized to repay back those revenue, sales tax revenue bonds, as well as our GO debt. And those payments are made twice a year, those payments are made during November, as well as May. And so you will see on the next few slides, when we get to November quickly, you will see that there was a payment issued for our debt service, and that's, those series, we have four series. We have a 2011, 2013, 2019, and 2017 for those particular series. And you'll hear me reference those throughout the different times when we're talking about financials, as well as just our financials of the district. And then we have our student activity, and our student activity is athletics and extracurricular activities. And that is its own standalone, it is well-used for revenues or gates, it's also donations. Sometimes there's fines and fees included in that. But we also then have those expenditures, which would be an example of uniforms, anything that supports the need for that athletics and that extracurricular, or those clubs and organizations. And again, this just shows what those revenues are taken in during the month, the expenditures during the month, and then our ending cash balance, and then a review of those prior, the prior year at this time. The one thing to note, there is a pretty significant dollars associated to our revenues this month in October, and that's because October and April, we do receive our property taxes, and so there are some, this is not common on a monthly basis that we have $13 million in revenues in our general fund. So as we go to the next screen, we do have a few more funds that are available. That's our agency fund, and our agency fund really is considered, otherwise known as custodial funds. And that's because the district is holding those funds for another, it's PTOs, PTAs, as well as then parent groups associated to our sports organizations. And you'll see the, again, this is a common theme with the revenues, the beginning balance, the revenues, and then the expenditures for that particular month with that total ending balance. Our enterprise fund, again, our enterprise fund is our food service, and that is a standalone fund, that is, revenues are made up of state and federal funds associated to reimbursement, reimbursable meals. Just to remind the Board, this year, the federal government did make available to all students a free meal, a free lunch, and free breakfast each day. And we have had significant participation, which has been fantastic. And so it allows those students to receive those meals as needed. The one thing to remember is, this fund is also issued with parent-paid associated to the meal cost associated each year. So there are fees that are reviewed associated to that, and that would also be included in revenues. Your expenditures are tied directly to the food service department, so that would include your salaries and benefits of your food service workers, as well as then also the food cost and any other equipment that might be associated to the food service department. Then we have our student coffee shop, our student coffee shop, actually, we have that available and open this year, last year it was closed down unfortunately due to the pandemic, but we do have that at the high school. It has minimal activity, but it's great activity because it does offer our students and our staff some great products provided by those individuals. So again, those revenues and expenditures, that is a self-fund, the revenues and expenditures make those profits available for them to be utilized. And then we have our River Hills Consortium, and that is a flow-through account. That is, 43 districts actually participate in our River Hills, and that is for those individuals with special ed needs. They are, those dollars associated to that, we contract those services through the Central Rivers AEA, and those districts actually issue those payments to the district, and we issue them to the Central Rivers AEA. And so that is a flow-through. You'll see that there are balances throughout the month in that account, but at the end of the year, that is zeroed out. So in November, when we get to that, you'll see that there actually is available revenues, and that's because they've issued invoices and are starting to collect those funds. So this shows a snapshot of the month-end balances, if we go to the next one, this just shows then October, as is year-to-date balances, and that's tied to our certified budget at that time, where we stand right now, as well as then what we've utilized thus far, to what our certified budget was at the time of last year in April, once it was certified. Were expenditures, and were a percentage remaining for both our revenues and our expenditures. And then as we go to the next slide, you'll see that as well with the remaining funds, those agency, enterprise, student coffee, and then River Hills. Janelle, if you could pull up November as well real quick, we'll be able to quickly go through those as well. Feel free to ask any questions in regards to these particular funds. But in November, then, we also had, we had those same funds, obviously, we can go to the next one, you'll see the revenues and the expenditures again with those remaining balances, and where those balances were at the prior year. Again, a couple things to notate on our debt service, you'll see where I mentioned a few minutes ago, the expenditures tied to that debt service. We issued a payment of $744,899.36, and that was specifically interest only. The principal and interest will be paid at the time of May. And then if we go to the next one in regards to our November, you'll see again that River Hills that I just mentioned previously regarding revenues that are coming, you'll see an expenditure during our December as well to reflect that those have been issued to Central Rivers AEA accordingly, and that's of the $174,988. I go through these on a monthly basis to review and for questions, and I'd feel free to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions? I'll ask one, which is, so when do you anticipate, obviously, interest rates continue to be low and we need to issue bonds, so it's watching that, hoping that interest rates continue to stay low, and we want to take advantage of that. When do you anticipate that we'll be able to issue more bonds for the high school and hopefully get that in before any interest rate increases?
Yep, so we have been working with our financial advisor specifically in regards to that. We want to obviously get those interest rates low as possible for the district. We do have to ensure that we're watching that particularly because we have to ensure we spend those dollars in a period of time accordingly. And so there's a little bit of window there that we can ensure that we can spend those accordingly, but also be in compliance with that as well.
How long do we actually have between the issuance of those bonds and when the funds need to be spent?
It's two years.
Two years?
Mm-hmm, yep, it's 24 months. And so at this time, we are reviewing those particular interest rates availabilities, and we're looking within the next six months that we will be issuing that because the project continues to move forward, and it's great length. And so we will need those funds in order to be able to move forward with that.
Yes, in the words of the project manager, we're making good progress.
We are, we're making great progress. Great question. So yes, in the next few months, we'll definitely be coming back to the Board with some recommendations and some suggestions, and moving forward as we need to with that.
Yeah, great, because with the Fed indicating that they're going to raise interest rates, it's a good time to get that done.
Yep, great question.
Any other questions or comments?
I have a quick question.
I have a quick question. In regard to the school lunch program, you know, we kind of made those changes this year in response to, you know, COVID and, and federal funding that was available. What do you anticipate will happen moving forward? And are we, you know, going to do any kind of research or investigative work to determine? I, I'm guessing there are probably some students who are taking advantage of this who didn't before, but because they couldn't or didn't qualify for the free lunch program. So I just wonder if we have a sense as a district if we're really serving a, a large population of students who, if we would go back, you know, are maybe really benefiting from this because they're having a better lunch, they're having more consistent lunch, and they're just not able to take advantage of the free lunch program.
Well, we currently do work with the Department of Education to provide updates and to ensure that we're compliant and, and potentially know what their next steps are, obviously. Unfortunately, at this time, um, what we've understood is that this will end as of June for our students. But it may change, obviously. It's always pivoting as we know. The one thing that we do continue to ensure with the staff or with the students and their families is we do still promote that, that need of free and reduced applications to ensure that they are receiving those as well as completing those. Because there are other areas in which that would apply for them. And that way then we can ensure that those students are receiving those needs that they potentially may have.
I would say also that decentralizing our kitchens, especially at the elementary level, has really driven some of those participation rates. It's not necessarily the access to the free lunches or breakfasts. It's the quality of those meals that are being served because they're served and prepped right there on site. I think they're much more fresh. There's a lot more, uh, fruits, fruits and vegetables that are served. And I think that's certainly a driver for a lot of our students.
Would you remind us, speaking of the elementaries, do all the kitchens have that? Or are we talking only a series of those that we've done the renovations on or new?
They all do except one. And that one is a little bit more complicated. Our hope with our ten-year Pupple Plan that that would be accomplished this, this summer, but that was not the case, or won't be the case due to the escalation of prices. But we also know then we have one junior high that we're still going to work on. Hopefully that's going to be done in the next summer or two. And then once the high school's completed, all of our buildings will have decentralized kitchens.
All right. Great questions. So, uh, Danelle's report is placed on file and will be part of the audit process, which occurs annually of all the district's financial results. Moving now to item O, uh, to talk about plans and specifications for, uh, instead of public hearing for roofing, tuck pointing project.
So we have Daryl Smith with us this evening. Just a little background real quick. We have a ten-year Pupple Plan for the district. That's our physical plant and equipment levy. If we use acronyms too much, please call us out on that because there are a lot of acronyms. In the physical plant and equipment levy, there's a ten-year plan for, as Danelle talked about preventative maintenance, ongoing corrections within our buildings, fleets for our vehicles. And, and part of that ten-year Pupple Plan, we also have a ten-year roof replacement repair plan. So tonight is the continuation of that work. And part of that is some tuck pointing and other things which, uh, Mr. Smith will talk about. But this is, uh, an annual venture that we go through and process that we go through as we look at that ten-year plan as well as the ten-year roof and preventative maintenance updates for our buildings.
Thank you. As he said, I'm Daryl Smith at Terricon. And if you want to go to the next slide, projects are Cedar Heights Elementary Schools, the far northwest section. I'm going to have a little plan here, next slide on showing that. And then we're also doing masonry tuck pointing at Pete Junior High, which is the multipurpose cafeteria area, which is, uh, the area there at the kind of northeast corner of the building with the windows that face the street there. That building's, I think it's, I think that portion of the building's like nineteen sixty-five originally built. So it's due for some work. So next slide. So this shows the area for Cedar Heights at that northwest corner. What we're going to be doing, that, that roof is a shingled roof, but it's a pretty low slope for a shingled roof. It's about two twelve slope. Usually shingles need to be four twelve. So, um, we're, there's been some issues. As you can maybe see with the arrows, they're showing some issues there on that roof. We're going to take, uh, the shingles off, the underlayment off. Make sure the plywood deck is all good. Any plywood deck that, that's, uh, wet will, uh, or damaged will remove and replace that. And also be re-fastening the deck. Might, might have been a problem with the original deck fasteners and that. So we'll do all that. We'll add additional insulation to, to the roof deck. And then we'll be putting on an adhered PVC membrane that simulates a metal roof with a, with a seam that hot welded right directly to the sheet. So it looks, so it's kind of a fall path, uh, standing seam roof without the cost of standing seam roof. So. Next slide. That, that shows the area of the multipurpose room. Again, as I said, I think that section's originally nineteen sixty-five or sixty-six, something like that. The, the mortar joints are pretty badly cracked. There's some, that, that's, that's the biggest, biggest problem with, with, with the exterior walls, the mortar joints and sealant joints. There is some exterior brick that's cracked that we'll remove and replace. But, uh, and we'll be doing all four sides of that. Couple, the south side there is adjacent to a existing roof and always have the contractor protect that existing roof while they're doing the repairs and things like that. So. Next slide shows budget costs. Cedar Heights, hundred, about a hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars. Pete Junior High repairs about a hundred and one thousand dollars. So anticipated construction costs about two hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars. So we've, I, we usually do this meeting in January, but, but with the, uh, supply chain issues, we tried to move it up a month so that we can get the materials in time so we can do this in summer, summer construction work this year. So hopefully things will work out, so.
And I would say a couple of the different comments. It is a thirty-year roof warranty with that.
Yes.
Seamless roof or the welded roof. I can't remember exactly what it's called. I would also say that, uh, in the past, Daryl has always kind of said, we will be fairly confident with our pricing. This day and age, we can't necessarily say that we are one hundred percent confident where this could come in at. So as you look at the timeline, we, we certainly know that as we open up bids, we look to award contract. It's all contingent upon if this is still within that scope of our budget and, and where we know and hope that it's going to land. So this is a little bit, um, less certain than what we've been in the past, but certainly hope to be able to move forward with this this summer.
I don't want to brag, but I will. But in past years, my estimates have usually been high. The bids have usually come in lower than, than my estimates. But this year, all hands are off.
So when you were preparing these estimates, um, was it based on, like, did you do a, kind of a pre-crazy supply chain mentality? Or this is what you think that it will be?
This is what I think it'll be with, with cost estimate with.
With what's going on right now?
The way prices are raising right now, this is, this is my estimate of what I think prices are going to be in the next month and a half.
So how different are these prices to what you think it would have been?
Oh, probably twenty to thirty percent higher.
Twenty-three percent. And, and sorry, I'm just asking follow-up questions here and I don't want to, but so how does that compare? Because we have in our ten-year plan, for example, this project. So this was, what, a total of about?
About two hundred and ninety-seven thousand.
Three hundred thousand, yeah. How does that compare with our ten-year? Because we had a placeholder and we said to do this work, how does that compare with our ten-year plan?
We provide that budget to, to Daryl accordingly. And we do have an escalation within our budget accordingly for our ten-year Pupple Plan. It's not twenty to thirty percent.
I was going to say, it better not be twenty-three percent.
Oh, we usually shoot that for that three hundred thousand dollars in construction cost.
Yep. Unfortunately, then it does, because of the cost associated to it or potential cost, it has limited some of those repairs that we need. But we do review with Daryl to ensure that we're hitting those areas that are highly needed to ensure that we can continue with our buildings and the safety of them.
Okay. So I'm interpreting from that, three hundred is more or less the number.
Approximately.
Gave it, gave it to Daryl, and so what you had to do was reduce the scope.
Right. Yeah, usually we have two or three, at least three or four type buildings or something like that for a, for a project like this, so.
Okay. And, and, uh, I mean, my crystal ball is really fuzzy, but I mean, do you predict that? I mean, it seems like construction material costs will come down as the supply chain comes back.
I'm not, I'm not going to make, I'm not going to make that statement.
Yeah.
Sorry.
We, we've actually helped try to answer that question a little bit, working with our design team for the high school. And they have said they do not anticipate anything coming back to where the costs were previously. They think that there will be a flattening that will occur here in the next month or two or three, but they do not believe that there's going to be a decline in some of those prices to a, to a large extent. So we may be in a new normal with some of these prices.
And would you determine any of these are like absolutely mission critical, doesn't occur this summer, we're going to have problems?
Say that again?
Do you, do you consider that either of these projects to be like mission critical? Like if it doesn't happen?
Oh, oh, no, no, no. If, no, I, I mean, but we need to do them as soon as we can. But yeah, no, not if, if for some reason they can't get done this summer, that, I mean, there's not going to be a major, any kind of a major issue the following year, you know, within a year or something like that.
Okay. All right. Other questions and comments on this?
Well, that's why we're moving, moved, I talked to the membrane manufacturers and asked them what, for this material, and they said six months. So that's why we moved it up a month so that we can try, hopefully get it here by June or July so we can get, get it done during construction.
And that will be part of the bidding process, too, to, to have that window to make sure that we can get the products ahead of time.
Andy, will it be necessary for our facilities group, our design group, to re, to meet again and kind of review that ten-year plan, knowing that now what we had planned and thought we could budget for is probably, we're going to have some things that are being pushed out or pushed off of that? Will that be part of something that happens?
Yeah, we'll bring that back to the board. Typically, we bring that to the board in, in November, but just with some of the escalation in pricing, it's taken us longer to pull in some of the estimates, especially, well, I should say both short-term and long-term as we looked at which of those projects we hope to have as a prioritized list. And, and again, we have that down in three prioritization areas. But yes, we'll bring that back to the board, and I believe that's scheduled to be brought back in January.
All right. Good. All right. Excellent. Does he know the questions to ask for a motion for this to be, uh, to go out for bid?
I move that the Cedar Falls Community School District Board of Education approve the proposed plan specifications, proposed form of contract, and set a public hearing date on January ten, twenty twenty-two at five thirty PM for the twenty twenty-two roofing and tuck pointing projects.
Thank you, Lowell. Is there a second? All right. RJ, thank you. All those in favor say aye.
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 Pose same sign. Thank you much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Daryl.
All right. Moving to item P on the agenda, approval SPRC application for LEP, Modified Allowable Growth. Danelle?
Yes, and if Janelle could pull up that, uh, presentation for me this evening. This is the Limited English Proficiency or LEP. It's a mouthful. It's another, uh, another acronym. And that is really serving those individuals with primary languages other than English. And if we can go to the next one, this is an annual request that is provided, and it's regarding based on funding available. For twenty twenty-one, uh, school year, LEP statistics, we had a hundred and five students that were served specifically for LEP. At this time, for instructional purposes, we obviously have more teachers assisting these students, but we have three designated, uh, staff members assisting those students for the LEP services. We have twenty-five different languages represented, which is about one point eight seven percent of our total certified enrollment as of October of twenty twenty. You'll see on the screen those students served, and this is fluctuates each year. You'll see that for twenty twenty-one, it was pretty much, uh, similar to our nineteen twenty as well. It was a little bit increased as well as in those student languages, they do fluctuate as well. And again, uh, they did increase for the twenty twenty-one school year. As we move forward to the next slide, you'll note that the expenses associated to the twenty twenty-one LEP are primarily instruction, and that's those three, uh, staff members that are associated to that as well as then additional supplies and purchase services needed for that. So there's the supplies and benefits for a total, um, expenditures for our LEP program of two hundred and twenty-three thousand five hundred and ninety-five dollars. And going to the next slide, you'll see the breakdown then associated to that. And this is for requesting additional funding that, uh, to cover those costs associated to that. And so the total expenditures were two hundred and twenty-three thousand. We had weighted funding received, and we do receive those dollars accordingly of a hundred and forty-four thousand two hundred and two dollars. We had other resources of fourteen thousand seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars. And then our modified allowable growth for fiscal twenty was twenty-six thousand three hundred and sixty dollars for total resources available of a hundred and eighty-five thousand three hundred and forty dollars and fifty-two cents for a maximum allowable request of thirty-eight thousand two hundred and fifty-four dollars and ninety-three cents. Again, as I mentioned, those are flexible, um, per year. They change each year. This is, uh, decreased from last year. Last year's was a little over forty-seven thousand. The prior year before that was eighty thousand. And that's dependent upon the number of students that are served and those services that are required. So it would be the recommendation, um, for the board to move forward with that approval of the thirty-eight thousand two hundred and fifty-four dollars and ninety-three cents.
All right. Questions? So where, uh, so we obviously get additional funding, which you were on that slide, that hundred and forty-four thousand or whatever. We get some weighted funding. Available. And, but there's, there's obviously, we've got expenditures which exceed that.
Correct.
So, uh, this gives us permission to do that. Where do we take those funds from?
So this allows us to have that discussion. Are you talking about the additional services or are you talking about the thirty-eight thousand dollars?
Yeah, the thirty-eight thousand dollars. Where do we take it?
Yep. This allows the board to have consideration during our certified budget to, at that time, discuss the tax implications to our, to our community and how that may affect that. And so, um, this is an annual request that is utilized. And so, um, it is a, it is part of our cash reserves or additional SPRC requests that we make each year.
So if I can jump in just with a quick explanation as well. So this is a request to the SPRC, which is the School Budget Review Committee. It's a group of statewide officials that look at requests across the state. And this is asking for the authority to be able to, in the future, generate those dollars through property tax, cash reserves, if and when the district may need that. So, uh, in school finance, authority is much more important than cash. The authority allows you the opportunity to generate the necessary funds and funding, uh, to pay for the services of educating our students. And just as, um, I know people are aware of this, but school financing and, and financial affairs are always one year in arrears. So we always receive funding for the prior year's enrollment. And with a district that's growing in enrollment, which we'll talk about here in a bit, we always are, uh, using the cash available to fund for the education of additional students. And then the SPRC allows you to ask for that authority to generate that into the future. So that's what this is about, asking for the authority to generate those funds in the future.
Thank you. All right. Is there a motion to approve that?
I move that the Board of Directors of the Cedar Falls Community School District approve the application to the School Budget Review Committee for excess limited English proficient student costs in the amount of thirty-eight thousand two hundred and fifty-four dollars and ninety-three cents.
All right. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Brenda? I'll, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Pose same sign. Motion carries. Now moving to an additional SPRC item for Modified Allowable Growth. Danelle?
Yes, actually, Dr. Petit did a fabulous job in regards to, uh, authority and request for authority. And this is specifically what that is. It is regards, it's an annual request. And if we go to the next slide, it's, nope, that's, that's obvious, that's incorrect slides. That's okay. It's actually the supplemental Modified Allowable Growth. That's the next agenda item. It's okay. I'll keep talking, though it is in regards, it's a three-part application. And what that is, is the increased enrollment, open enrollment out, as well as the ELL beyond five years. And that's English Language Learners. And for the application, like I said, there are three parts. The district actually only qualifies for two parts. And this is specific to our increased enrollment. And you'll see that that allowable growth and what we are asking for is that, um, authority to utilize, to be able to, uh, utilize what we are spending for those dollars. But we are asking for authority, the proper authority through the SPRC. And so the actual certified enrollment for fall of twenty twenty, you'll see, was five thousand four hundred and fifty-six students. The actual certified enrollment for this year was five thousand five hundred and sixty students for an increase of a hundred and nine point four. With our current district cost per pupil is seven thousand.
With our current district cost per pupil is $7,227, for a total modified supplemental amount of $790,633. And again, as we move forward then, that third application, or the second one actually, is that open enrollment out. The district does not qualify for that, and therefore then we are moving towards that English Language Learners, that are E L L beyond five years. And we had 24 students with that weighted, weighted total weight of 5.04, with that again, total cost per pupil of $7,227, for the modified supplemental amount of $36,424. Again, as we move forward then, again, this is really just the request that provides us that additional budget authority for the 2122 school year, for a total request of $827,057.
Thank you very much, Janelle. Questions?
How is the waiting for the E L L determined?
That is determined by Iowa Code in the, in the state of Iowa. So, and that has not changed for, I believe, close to 20 years. It's the same waiting that's been in place.
So from a perspective standpoint, that's 790,000, which is corresponding to the difference in enrollment from last year to this year. Going back to the comment about our budget is, our numbers and the amount of revenue that we receive as a district is determined by last year's, last year's number of students, even though we have 109 more students this year. That is kind of the gap. Because of that, as a growing district, we've got a $790,000 gap in our funding, because we have that many more kids, and, and so this, this is just giving us the authority to spend the money, but it doesn't generate the funds. Yep, gotcha.
The cash is not generated. We use the dollars in which we have to fund those. Yep.
Yep, gotcha. Okay, thank you. Is there a, well, can I have the motion to approve this? It's a two-part motion.
I move that the Board of Directors of the Cedar Falls Community School District approve the application for the School Budget Review Committee in the amount of $790,633.80 for Modified Allowable Growth due to increasing student enrollment.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Nate. See no further comment. Move to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. And now the second part for the E L L.
I move that the Board of Directors of the Cedar Falls Community School District approve the application for the School Budget Review Committee in the amount of $36,424.80 for limited English proficient instruction for students in the program beyond five years for the 2021-2022 school year.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jenny. Move to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Pose same sign, motion carries. All right, moving to denounce, this is your evening.
It is my evening.
The fiscal 2021 Treasurers Reconciliation Report.
Yes, unfortunately, Mr. Lynch would not, could not be able to join us this evening. He is our treasurer for the district, and that is determined each year by the board in July. But he was able to provide a Treasurers Reconciliation Report, in which I'll read to the community, as well as the board members. It's dated October 25, 2021, and he said first, let me apologize for not being able to present in person, but I am giving a final exam to my corporate finance class at the university at the same time as the school board meeting. As shown on the June 30, 2021 Treasurers Reconciliation Report for the Cedar Falls Community School District balances are as follows. Depository checking accounts at Farmer State Bank totaled $9,924,041.56, spread over four different accounts. Our various investment accounts held by Iowa Vocational Rehabilitation Services, Regions Capital Advantage, Lincoln Savings Bank, Collins Community Credit Union, and Farmer State Bank total $50,267,059.65 for a total Treasurers balance effective June 30, 2021, of $60,191,101.21. By comparison, the district secretary's fund balance total $60,001,163,208, combined with the difference of outstanding checks, rev track deposits, and deposits in transit in the amount of $28,099.13, for a total of $60,191,101.21 as the same date. I'm happy to report a balanced reconciled report of $60,191,101.21. Sincerely, Daniel Lynch. And I'd really like to thank Mr. Lynch for, as Mr. Hasman has indicated, this is a voluntary position, and he does provide some great expertise to the district and assistance throughout, and does review these periodically to ensure the accuracy of our continued Treasurers balance, so. And this is a yearly request and a review for the board at this time during our organizational meeting, so.
Very good. So can I have a motion to approve this report?
I move that we approve the fiscal 2020 year, 2021 Treasurers Reconciliation Report as presented.
All right, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Suzie. Moving to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Pose same sign, motion carries. Janelle, one more time.
Last one, I promise, for the evening. If we could pull up the River Hills Special Education Administrative Cost Request. This is an annual request again, and again, as I had mentioned earlier this evening, River Hills is our consortium with our school districts, surrounding school districts. Moving to the next slide, you'll see that the consortiums consist of 43 public schools. Currently, we have 28 have students enrolled for the 2122 school year. And the purpose of the consortium is to provide that appropriate educational opportunities for those students. This year at River Hills, they serve 84 students from ages three to 21. And the consortium members districts contract with the Central Rivers A E A, and that's for the staffing, as well as the lease of the facilities. As you can, as you can see on the screen, the consortium member districts who have students attending the program are allowed for the administrative cost to request at that time. Administrative costs are not normally allowed in student, or excuse me, in special education, and it is for this particular program, our River Hills Consortium, that it is allowed. It is specific to be made one year in advance, so these costs associated to this are for the 2223 year. If we move forward then, you'll see that the total cost of the administrative salary is $149,217. It is divided by those 84 students at a total of $1,776. We have attending at the River Hills facility 13 students with the cost of FICA and I P Rs. We have a total request of $27,039.83. This is, this is, amount is included in the district's total special education cost, so that would be added to that special education cost at the time in which we end our fiscal year. This will be again for the 2223 school year.
All right, thank you. Can I have a motion?
I move that the Board of Directors of the Cedar Falls Community School District approve the application to the School Budget Review Committee in the amount of $27,039.83 for special education administrative costs associated with River Hills Consortium Program for the 2022-2023 school year.
Thank you, Jenny. Is there a second? Thank you, RJ.
Could I just give some context to this, just so everybody understands? So in 2000, I believe, 11 is when this took place, that there were programs that were established by the area education agencies, and I believe there are four of them across the state of Iowa. One was River Hills. Iowa Code did not change, but interpretation of Iowa Code changed at that time. That said, A E As, area education agencies, cannot run a program like this. So they were transitioned to the local districts, which had to become the fiduciary agents. We became the budgetary agent, and the A E As continued to run those schools. So these are not, the employees at River Hills are not employees of the Cedar Falls Community School District. They are employees of the A E A. However, you'll see, as Janelle talked about in the budget, flow-through dollars. The districts that send students to River Hills send the revenue to us. We turn around, send that to A E A. Again, there are, I believe, four consortiums in the state of Iowa, River Hills being one of them. I believe Brimwood, Ottawa Waverly is one of them. There's a few down in the Des Moines metro area. So it's a little unique as far as the educational model, but historically, it was not a Cedar Falls program. It's a wonderful, wonderful program. I encourage everybody, if you have an opportunity, to go and visit River Hills. The work that they do is amazing, but that's just a little bit of the historical context around how it was established, and also how the fiduciary agent came into being.
Very good. Thank you for that. See no other questions or comments? We'll move to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Pose same sign, motion carries. All right, moving to superintendent's report.
Yeah, just a few different items. Our next board meeting is January 10, 5:30. We have been informed that the council chambers, as part of the remodeling of this building that's taking place by the city, they don't know exactly when that's going to start, or when we might be displaced, but because of that remodeling, this room will be unavailable. We will meet, and we'll make sure we post this in multiple locations. It can be communicated out at the community center, there in the public library. We'll have all the cameras, Channel 15 will move all the microphones, so it'll still be televised. It'll just be physically in a different location. We don't know if that'll take place prior to the 10th, but we have to have a little flexibility with that. We also have a Board Admin Council Retreat, January 12, at 9:30 AM, at the Robinson Admin Center. We hope everybody can be in attendance. That is a focus on our mid-year goals, our building goals, and update from our administrators, as well as some of our other special areas to provide some insight on the work that's going on, kind of on a daily basis within our buildings. We do, again, as we've talked about, have the high school construction ongoing. We encourage everybody to go out and look at the website. There's a wonderful drone footage of the construction, I believe, from about a week and a half ago. You will see that there's more verticality happening at the sites, and that is the auditorium. There is actually steel roofing being installed on that auditorium structure, as well as work that's going to begin on our band rooms, orchestra rooms, chorus rooms around the auditorium. And then they're going to move towards the east, which will then be in our office areas, the new gymnasium, and some of the other common spaces. So it's coming along really, really well. The last one is just more of an update for board members. There has been a change, and in fact, it was two sentences in some federal legislation that was recently passed that requires districts do what's called off-site filtering. So any device that's owned by the school district, any device actually owned by public libraries, will have the off-site filtering occur, so students won't be able to access some inappropriate websites. It has some parameters that we're working through with the subcommittee, but in essence, it should not impact anybody in a negative way. It just means that there might be some sites that, appropriately, somebody might have gone to that were off-site, that they now can't go to. And this is all based on whether or not we would be able to be eligible for E-rate funding in other federal funds, which we typically will apply for roughly $400,000 to $500,000 for. So it's just more of awareness for the board, as well as community members, that a student device will have some filtering that will occur off-site, instead of having the firewall only onsite. Questions?
Questions for?
What's the timeline of the new high school looking like? Is it still, as we get supply chain mentioned earlier, they're, they're up right now? Are we still looking to be, struggle on time?
Yeah, actually, so the, the original timeline for the high school is to open up in the fall of 2024. We are in, in the, when we did our board visit a few months ago, they won't say that we're ahead of schedule, but it's coming along extremely well with the weather and certainly the spring and summer that we've had. The hope is that that will still be done and completed roughly in December of 2023, January of 2024. It looks like that is right on target, which would allow us then to be able to move in all of our furniture fixtures, technology equipment into the building, and then work on the transitioning to be able to get classroom supplies, equipment moved over, curriculum moved over into that June-July timeframe, and, and open up fall of 2024. So knock on wood, we have not been impacted by the supply chain. But again, our design team, it was wonderful to tell contractors, as we let bids back, well, roughly a year ago, to order, and order quickly to get those things into the pipeline, and most of our contractors did just that.
On the same note, Andy, what about the, the pool and the fieldhouse projects, given that we are quite a bit further behind on that?
Yeah, so, two different things that we're working on with fundraising. One is the, the pool. There's some district pebble dollars that go into that, some city dollars, as well as fundraising. We know that the pool overall cost has escalated because of the supply chain, some of the other components. The second project is what's called the Tiger Performance Center. We've said all along, the pool has to be that first priority, because of the fact that that is going to replace two pools that are at the end of their, their life cycle. We have, we're going to receive, I think, final estimates for cost and pricing. The hope would be the pool could open at the same time as the, the high school in that fall of 2024, which would mean that our bidding window would be in that kind of May of 2022 timeframe, when you look at when you can mobilize and when construction could start within a 12- to 14-month construction frame, framework. So we are meeting with, again, the fundraising group, I think, at the end of this week, to be able to talk through some of those components, where we're at, how we feel, as far as we're moving forward. And then we should have more information hopefully in January.
Questions? Any other questions? I know there's one question that received from, like, volunteers in buildings, and, and that there's parents and others that are anxious, obviously, to contribute, and have been a big help in our, in our schools, and because of everything, we're kind of thrown off. Do you anticipate that, how does it look for that potentially happening?
Yeah, and I'm looking at Pam, because I know we're going to have that discussion again this week with, with some of our building leadership. It's one of those aspects where, yes, our hope is to be able to get volunteers back into our buildings very soon. We need them. And it's also one of those aspects, we're trying to balance health and safety. We believe that's going to take place hopefully in January, is, is the optimistic view.
Okay, all right, good. All right, seeing no other questions or comments, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
I do just do one more comment real quick, Jeff. I mean, I just want to thank our new board members for being willing to step into this role. People getting involved in service is a huge commitment, but it's so important that we have people who come with the right mindset and the right heart to come in and do the work that is best for all students. We have an example sitting right in our room right now. One of our music teachers is in the room, and we just have such a great culture in our district. So Shelley Dro is in the room with us. She is reflective of that. And I just want to thank everybody for being willing to serve, because it's, you, you are just going to have impacts on so many students, and it's pretty rewarding work most of the time. So welcome, and thank you for being here.
I guess I can make a comment. I'm excited to be here and excited to serve, and I felt nothing but welcoming and open arms from the current board members and the departing board members, and Dr. Petit, and so anyway, I'm excited to serve here, and thanks for welcoming me.
And I'll second Lowell's sentiment. Just looking forward to this journey and adventure that, that we're on, and look forward to working with all of you, and thank you to the community for the support in bringing us here. So thank you.
I guess I would be remiss if I didn't say something. I echo both of what you have said, talking to Mr. Orvis here a little bit prior to the meeting, and, you know, he asked some questions, and, and one of the things that always comes up for me is, you mentioned it, Jenny, getting involved. I've got four kids in the, in the district. My wife's from Cedar Falls. Obviously, we have strong feelings about Cedar Falls, and we want it to be the best that it can be. So I would also encourage parents to just stay involved, get involved if you're not. And I think we can all be better together, so thanks for having me.
Well, thank you. Welcome, everyone. And with that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right, Jenny, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, thank you, RJ. All right, thank you, RJ. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Thank you very much.